Some of the comments and a lot of the emails we've said is that we've already, we rejected DPZ's. We didn't take a vote. We had, we had, we had a discussion. We asked some pointed questions. And I think similar to what I said at the end of the last public forum and what Commissioner Bregash said today, it doesn't sound like any of us are in favor of the Commerce Plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, well, I mean, I don't know when people continually say rumors and rumors. I mean, who said it? I mean, you know, that the developers, the consultants said, I mean, who, who said that? I mean, I'm, I'm not going to entertain just rumor mail going, I mean, because quite frankly, Beulah should have an impact, Commissioner Bregash, but this is a countywide project in which we put countywide money and put a lot of our projects on hold to support this.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I'll tag onto that and I'll just make a comparison that might be a little more profound. A few years back, we bought property in your district, Commissioner May, and, and, you know, it was a tough issue for you. I mean, we're building a jail in the middle of his district. And what did he do? He listened to people. A lot of people didn't want it. A lot of people came here and said, "We don't want a jail. We don't want this in our neighborhood. We don't want a jail." And what did he do? He listened to the people. And we added amenities. And we added stormwater amenities. And we added a neighborhood center that we're going to add. We added a strip center. We added some amenities, but at the end of the day, the county spent public money for a purpose. And the purpose was to build a jail. And it's a big impact in his community. But if he would have come to the board and said, "You know, a lot of people are coming to the meetings and they just don't like the idea of a jail. And they don't want it in this area on this land. So let's just do something different. Let's do a, like a miniature holding facility. We won't call it a jail. It'll be kind of like a jail, but not really a jail. And let's just build a bunch of parks and neighborhood amenities." I mean, it sounds ludicrous, but does it really sound that far off from what we're doing here? A 25-year effort, $18 million spent from every district for something that obviously is going to have an impact on me and you and everyone that lives out there. But it's going to have an impact on us. But we're, we're trying, what we're trying to do here is work out the best way that everyone can have a win. In Commissioner May's district, we're building a brand-new jail. It put a lot of people to work. It's the largest public works project this county has ever done. And it'll be a great thing for the entire county. But it came at a cost to him politically.
Absolutely.
He's got people mad at him to this day. I can't believe he built a jail there. Well, the county sometimes has to do things that impact our areas, our neighborhoods. And we do the very best we can to ameliorate those concerns. Now, you know, Teresa, you know, I'm sorry that on my blog I allow free speech. And folks have, you should see the things they say about me on Facebook Citizens Watch. All right? So it's, social media is a rough-and-tumble place. I don't agree, but I do believe in free speech. And you and I might disagree on anything, but I would fight to the death for your ability to be able to say exactly what you want. And I think that's the tie that binds us all. But when we get back to this project in Beulah, we have not made a decision. There is disinformation being sent out via email. And I do believe a lot of it's politically driven. I campaigned on this. Obviously, I've had to adapt my position. In 2016, when I ran for this job, it was going to be a Commerce Park. I supported that over residential. We've got too much residential out there anyway. And of course, I had to compromise. And I was willing to compromise. We have a 5-0 vote of this board. And that document's out there. And matter of fact, I think it might be a good time to put that out again. Maybe I'll have that added to the district, to the county's website so that people can see what this board voted on, 5-0. And that's supposed to be driving the discussions with DPZ. Now, yes, we've had citizen input. I've participated in the charrettes. I was online on the charrettes. I've met with DPZ. My only big no, my firm no is residential. I know I'm going to have to compromise. But I think we have enough residential out there already. I think the private market checks that box. I drive those roads every day and I see gigantic apartments going up on Nine Mile Road. I don't necessarily know we need to use this land for that. Again, I want green space, parks, a post office, a school, residential retail, which allows us to recoup some money. And I'd like to create some high-tech jobs in great, beautiful buildings. That's what Jeff Bregash wants. Don't listen to the emails. Don't listen to things that were said four years ago. Because four years ago is eternity in national politics and in local politics. I want good jobs and good amenities, period. Online, you know, people are going to talk about me. My, my recommendation to you, Teresa, is just ignore them. They lie. They lie about me all the time. You just have to ignore it. And, you know, if you go in there and, you know, you start saying stuff, you, you make yourself a public, you know, you, you increase your profile, your people will take shots at you. And I'm, I'm sorry if they do. They shouldn't. But believe me, it's common. So with all that said, we have not made a final decision. Come to every meeting if you want. It's a fight you don't have to have because what you want is what I want. I want good amenities and I want good jobs for every man on this board in his district. That's what I want. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Gretchen Huesman?
Good morning. 8435 Furlong Avenue, which is Audrey Plantation. We've been there 18 months and it leads out to Mobile Highway on which I take my life into my hands every time I drive those highways. We came from up north and my favorite joke is they drive in Illinois like pansies compared to the roads down here. And so I am here to talk about that development, but also to, to beg those who have any say in the infrastructure of Beulah to please keep that in mind as you are going forward. It is crazy, you know that. I changed my route to get here this morning because of whatever fog accident on Nine Mile. So please keep that in mind. I know a lot of the construction is state and county and you don't have, you know, you have to work together, but I'm here to beg you for that. And also, I have my little wish list, too. We love Beulah. We think it's beautiful. And I very much want to keep Beulah beautiful. Not only for those of us who are newcomers to the state and the community, but those who built their farms out there, who love the country. So I am excited to hear things like green space. I, I don't want to have to drive to Milton to use their beautiful bike trail anymore. I want one right in my backyard. I would love that so I don't have to take my bike on Mobile and risk my life. So I love to hear that. I think that should be our number-one goal, is to keep Beulah beautiful. Post office, of course. Restaurants, sure. School, awesome. I'm a teacher. I think those are all wonderful plans, but let's keep the area what was meant to be, a beautiful country area. It scares me a little when I hear another Navy Federal. That gives me some anxiety to think about bringing in another city. That's how I describe it when people come to visit us. There's a city called Navy Federal. So that, that makes me shake a little. But if we can keep Beulah beautiful, bring some green space, then I'm all for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gretchen. David Solu?
Good morning. Yeah, pronunciation is actually swallow, so.
Sorry.
Definitely not a native here. I've been here many, many years, resident of Nature Trail. And I'm here to strictly oppose the development of Commerce Park there on the OLF property. My questions have been answered this morning, so I will not take up everyone's time. And I appreciate all the support that we are seeing here this morning. However, as you, as you've heard and, and hearing now from others, we're really in need of good clarifications and notifications in advance of any and all master planning. It's been going on quite a few years, but we're getting close to a, hopefully, a good decision and moving forward with this plan. Once again, I think the word is spoken this morning and the past few years. So simply, I ask the board to do what is right for the majority. And just remember that these buildings and structures that are proposed and that will be built eventually, you know, they'll be here a long time, long after we're gone. And I expect, you know, the board's legacy to carry on from the development of this beautiful little town of Beulah. So I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Hobbs?
Hi, I'm Michael Hobbs. My, my address is 9811 Fowler Avenue, Lot, Lot 8. I also work for Matchit Tow and Recovery at 127 Van Pelt Lane in District 3. However, my county commissioner's not here at this time. But I do want to make mention that we're here to seek a little bit more, you know, of the pie, I would say. We have not had a raise since 2009. The county commission, you guys, actually cap our paychecks. Tell us what we can make for everything that we do, basically. And so it's not just the company that makes more money if we get a raise. It's also the drivers. These people that go home every day to their families that live in your districts and, you know, have to provide and don't know from week to week what they're bringing home. It's a major issue, being that the insurance companies have not failed to go up every year so far to the point where, you know, it's, do we, can we pay the insurance company this month? Or are we going to have to take out a loan, the company loan, to go pay the insurance? It's that much of a difference. And, you know, you got drivers who are worried about making paychecks that week because they don't know if, you know, if they're going to make enough money to survive on from week to week. That shouldn't be an issue. I mean, seriously, we got people putting their lives on the line getting out here on these roads. You know, I-10 has not slowed down. It's getting faster, you know, at 70-plus miles an hour, you know? And you've got drivers on the side of the road. We're out there pulling driveshafts out of semi trucks just so we can get that semi truck off the road, get it cleared so that no one runs into that semi driver or that semi truck, you know? What we're doing is safety. We got to keep this, these roads safe for everybody. Not only do we get on the scene and have to clean up every single piece of junk on the highway to keep from getting a flat tire on somebody's car so they can turn around and blame us for, for not getting that piece of junk off the highway. And then we'll end up having to pay money to have their cars repaired because we left a piece of debris on the ground. We need to come in and talk and discuss what we can do about. I think the last county commission meeting we came into, we actually provided you guys with a, a draft of what we were looking for as far as pay raises go. It's not that much more than what we're already doing at this time. But please put us on the, on the agenda so we can come back in and discuss more.
Yep. And Board, we're, thank you, Mr. Hobbs. We, we are looking at putting that, adding that to the March Committee of the whole instead of the April, so, so that we can have that discussion. Edward Fox?
Morning. My name's Edward Fox. I'm actually a resident of Santa Rosa County, but I do work here in Ascami County. I've raised eight kids here in Ascami County, several which graduated from Ascami High School. I've worked for Bayside Towing on 20 Stump Field Road, also District 3. I've been in and out of tow trucks since September of 1990. The rate here in Florida, I started in Virginia, is only about 25% higher than it was in Virginia 20-some-odd years ago. I was amazed when I actually started driving a tow truck down here at the rates and the requirements and regulations. And I'd like to actually read something to you real quick here. This is from the U.S. Daily News. "The Center for Disease Control and Prevention Did a Rarity Study Focused on the Trade of Tow Truck Drivers." And in that study, in five years, 191 tow truck drivers were killed nationwide. This makes driving tow trucks, especially on freeways, one of the most dangerous jobs in this country. But it seems that the county rates what these drivers' lives are worth on the side of the road. Some of these drivers get, like myself, I drive an International. It's over $100,000 for that machine. The company is paying outrageous amounts for insurance. And yet, we're on call by police, fire, Highway Patrol, county, county police, city police, expect to be there within less than 30 minutes. And yet, we got to get there and clean up these accidents like the gentleman described. Vehicle's flying by us, driver's getting hit, injured. That was in the Centers of Disease Control study, how many are injured on the job. And yet, it seems that our lives are worth our 30% commission. So our two hours on the road is worth $30 for our life, that two hours. Is it fair? Please get on the agenda and address this issue.
Thank you. Kevin Wade?
Good morning. Kevin Wade, 413 Southeast Boblets. So much to talk about now. And I really feel for these people from OLF 8. And I have one really small question for Jeff Bregash. Commissioner, do you feel that your and the other people's comments in these charrettes is actually really well-represented in DPZ's presentation after those?
Yeah, the answer to that question is yes. I do believe that. They, DPZ has been very attentive to the, the folks that have participated. And so, yeah, I'll answer that question, yes. But I will say, there's a whole other group throughout the county who have also weighed in on polling and have also, you know, offered their inputs as well. And, and those inputs are equally as important, you know, kind of like the analogy I made to the jail. I mean, but I would say DPZ, I have no, I have no issue with the way they conducted the charrettes. I, I don't think there was a, a very large participation, in part due to COVID and the fact that we had to do them all online. But I, like I say, I myself participated. I think they have the best of intentions. I think they're going to come out with a, with a bang-up plan on the other side. And I think it's going to be, in between now and then, it's just going to be, you know, a lot of, there's going to be, it's a negotiation. It's a bargain in some respects. And then what they want and then what this board's willing to approve and what comes out of the sausage hopper is what comes out, you know? And I think everyone's kind of staked out their position. But to, to your specific question, yeah, I do think they've done a good job, to the extent they're able, given the constraints because of COVID.
Thank you. I've, I've, I've wondered just exactly how what you've just said, which is what I've been, been watching and hearing, really does reflect what happened the morning that the vote was taken and one commissioner tanked his scores to ensure that what really seemed like not the best presenter as a consulting firm ended up getting that bid. And it really sounds like that's what's been happening all along. And other than that, we're at 400,000-plus Americans dead due to COVID. And mask up, Escambia, please. 100 days, is that too much to ask? We still have people dying in Escambia. And we still have people in administrations who are still screaming hoax right now. It looks like the National Guard is being held to a higher standard than other services in regards to their people's ties to extremist organizations. I'm, I'm hoping that OLF 8 and our country and our county ends up being the pretty thing that we all want. And freedom for all. And let's get to a place where people are healthy enough in their heads so that the seat of our nation doesn't look like a dystopian hellscape of fences. Because there are some people who have to push a crazy, lying agenda that doesn't do anybody any good. And three of you, four of you, awesome, doing great. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Melissa Pino?
Thank you, Chairman Bender. Melissa Pino, 413 Southeast Boblets, candidate for County Commissioner, District 2. Disinformation, we got a problem with it in the county. And Kevin's right, what's going on at a federal level pushes straight down into our local politics. And disinformation thrives during a lack of transparency. I've never seen anything like the lack of transparency that's happening in this county right now since I moved here. And the public engagement is already, of course, suffering because of COVID. Chairman Bender, I am begging you, during your time as chair, to at least restore the half-hour of public forum that the people lost when you guys switched to this morning meeting. All you guys have to do is listen to the public for two hours a month.
Well, I, clearly, it's a.
And you are today, so thank you.
We're going on an hour and a half, so.
I, I wanted to thank you for doing that and not limiting people today. But please just push the public forum out and have the start time of the meeting to 9:30 and restore that, that half-hour. So the last couple of days, they got, you know, they're going on the Lake Charlene thing again on Escambia Citizens Watch. And they were kicking around the idea of where has everybody been who commented on that project? Guess it's not the political season. I've been very engaged in meetings for four years, but some of us are sheltering at home because of COVID, right? So Commissioner Underhill and everyone in the DAAs and the people who do comment publicly on these forums, I would really ask everybody to think hard before you engage in any disinformation, before it happens in an item that I might be getting back up for or another member of the public might be getting back up for. Because when these things get stated publicly, they're going to be, what did you say in the, back when you, you stated the lie that the reason that I was politicking was because you turned me down to go to the mall ball? You remember that night? That night, you said that, that you, you started to say the truth will come out and then you said the other side will come out. So think hard before there's any disinformation because that, that, that is going to be answered. And I have earned my place to be at this podium and I'm risking COVID to come down here again now that our national crisis has passed. To some degree, we're going to get some function back in our federal government. I'm so relieved that I can now return, like a lot of people who were really worried about what was going on federally and focus on Escambia County. And I'm going to be here at every meeting until the election. Speaking of the federal, I want everybody to think about the insurrection that happened and what would happen if that was going on outside these doors and nobody knew what was happening? And our thin blue line was the only thing that kept you all safe from being assassinated. And not one person on this DAAs has remembered Officer Sicknick or mentioned Officer Fanone, who had a heart attack while he was beating off insurrectionists. There were Capitol Police and Metropolitan Police going hand-to-hand combat. Thank you, thin blue line. There are people in Escambia who saw it and honor you guys because of it.
Thank you. Norman Jeter?
Hi. Norman Jeter, 5514 Boblet. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'll, I'll try to make it short because you've got a full house. Concerning the Galvez boat landing, I just want to go on record once again to say that, that the whole, well, the, the design of having the actual ramp placed right up next to a public swimming area is, is a very poor design and it's, and it's very irresponsible. The potential for accidents is, is really very good. A large truck with a large boat behind it. There's going to be a lot of kids swimming there. And it's just, it's not worth, there's, there's no reason to have it there. Where it is now is working fine. Yes, the, the boat ramp needs, the parking lot needs some work, whatever. But as far as moving the ramp, I think it's a horrible mistake. And I think eventually someone's going to get hurt. Kids run around and, and, and the people, when they're back in their trailers and their boats down, either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, it's just not a good scenario. So I, I hope you guys reconsider this design. Actually, if you keep it, if you keep the design as it is and redo it as it is, you'll be saving a great deal of money. So thank you very much for your time.
I have a question for the speaker.
Yes, sir.
Norman, you mentioned that you think it's unsafe to have the ramp right next to the public swimming area. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so are you advocating that we ban swimming in the area right next to the ramp where it's been going on for 30 years?
No, Doug, no.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Catherine Sharon?
Board, we have about four more speakers, if you need one.
Good morning. This is actually for District 3, so do we talk about this without Commissioner Lumen May?
You just addressed it to the board.
Okay. This is in regards to the Ortega subdivision retention pond expansion. We're just here as citizens expressing our thoughts and feelings about, we really kind of need this to happen. The flood of April 2014, our homes flooded, Hurricane Sally. We're just, the county has proposed a plan to extend the water retention pond. I don't know, am I talking at the correct time? Okay, because the gentleman at the front was like, "They're going to stop you if you're not supposed to talk about this here." So we're just asking as citizens if we could move forward with this project. I believe District 3 is, or y'all decide if you release the funding for this project, for them to purchase the property that is behind it, to expand the water retention pond. We really need this. And we know that it's not, you know, anybody's fault. Things happen. We're just kind of looking at different options that might be available for us. I believe that on the January 7th meeting, I listened and someone who has a home in California, their home flooded. So you know what it's like to lose all of your things and have to pack your clothes in Tupperware containers. I have a four-year-old pick all of her toys up and it's just a lot. It's traumatic sometimes, which, you know, you've been through it. So we're just really asking the board to, you know, push this through or pass it or whatever the verbiage is for that. Our, our community is a melting pot of many cultures, ethnicities, working class, retirees. And, you know, we work really hard, just as everyone else, to have our things and replacing them time after time. It just, it becomes a lot. So I know that I do have other community members here that have also been through it. And we just kind of wanted to come this morning, which we were late. We were supposed to be here earlier, but we thought 9 o'clock, to just kind of express our concerns and our feelings about this.
Kita Drive. And as the homeowner near the pond, we become increasingly concerned about the amount of backwater and the strong unsanitary issues that come along with the backflow. We are totally aware that it's only so much a holding pond can hold. But with moderate rain, we become very worried due to the upkeep and drainage issues. And I've been there less than five years and I'm a first-time homeowner and I love the neighborhood. And to add, I bought a brand-new car right before Hurricane Sally and it almost got totaled just because the pond was not able to hold enough water. And I love the neighborhood and that's the only thing that causes us, every time it rains, to be scared, like we need to just up and sell our home. And I just hope that just asking for funding would help us to just be able to, because I never thought to purchase my first home, I want to stay there for good. I thought it was a temporary home. But it's a lovely neighbor, neighborhood. And I just wanted to add that the retaining water after the storms, they're usually stormwater to prevent runoffs from reaching local rivers. Unfortunately, ours does not. If not properly cared for, these. If not properly cared for, these ponds can become liabilities instead of assets to impact our neighborhood. It is our sincere belief that expanding the pond would greatly reduce our flooding issues. We would really appreciate any assistance with this matter if we're to get out of control. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Dara Jefferson?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dara Jefferson, and I'm also here for the Ortega subdivision retention pond. Says, um, "I'm here today because my home is impacted every time the retention pond overflows. I came here today under the threat of COVID-nineteen because that's how important this is to me. We moved here five years ago, and approximately nine months later, we experienced our first flood. It rained and the retention pond overflowed. Needless to say, we lost quite a few possessions. Hurricane Sally has been gone for some months now, but my laundry room is still loo, is still losing, is just losing that musty, moldy smell you get, you know? Okay, so the storage of my mudroom and laundry room was ruined. There were clothes that were ruined and had to be thrown away. Now, I know you say that's a natural disaster, that's what happens in a natural disaster. We understand that, but this happens whenever it rains, okay? We live in constant fear of the overflowing retention pond. You say that's what insurance is for, no one wants to live having to constantly rearrange their lives every time there's a thunderstorm. So, as, um, someone stated yesterday in a speech, they said, "Some days, th, when you'll need a hand, there are other days when we are called to lend a hand." That is all the residents of the Ortega subdivision is asking for. We ask you to lend a hand. We have no other recourse, there's no one else we can turn to. You are our last line of defense. Our homes are our biggest investment. Please help us to protect our homes. Your home is where you should breathe easy, you can relax, you can feel secure. Please help us to restore some measure of that sense of security. We're asking you to lend a hand and release the funding needed to acquire the adjoining property so that the retention pond can be made larger. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. Thank you for whatever help you can give us to alleviate this constant threat in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Administrator?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, just for the, uh, the, for the last three speakers, uh, we do have an agenda item, uh, that we will be bringing to the board in the future related to this project.
Okay.
Yeah, and ma'am, and, and thank you for coming, enjoy. If you raise your hand, I don't know if she's here, engineer, but we are, if, if any of those who've just spoken about Ortega, we, that has been on my radar, and we've been working on it. It's taking a little longer than I anticipated, but we have that in the works, you know, to help alleviate your problem. So we are working on it, and she can kinda give you the details of it.
Our last speaker on that, on this topic then is Shirley Henry.
Good morning. Um, I also live in the Ortega subdivision, and
Ma'am, if you could just state your name for the record, please?
Pardon?
If you could just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, Shirley Henry.
Thank you.
Um, and I'm personally was not affected by the flood. It didn't reach up into my property, I'm a little bit on higher ground. But, um, I do want to attest to the fact that I live on the same street as many of these families are that were affected. I witnessed all the, the household goods, the appliances, the carpeting, the toys, everything out on the street, the furniture, everything out on the street that needed to be trashed. Saw bills where they were, had to put up in a hotel for two months while the work was being done, had to pay pet lodging fees, um, for, for the dogs. My husband took his kayak out and rode down some of these homes and helped take some of the dry food, dry stuff out. Uh, it just is something that happens often. It's, um, debilitating. It needs to be taken care of as quickly as possible. And apparently, we, I, I do have a comment on one of the emails that was sent, I'm not sure directly to who, but to the Commissioner's office. And the way it stated was that some Ortega residences have issued complaints that the pond has backed up into the neighborhood drainage system. It did not back up into the drainage system, the drainage system backed up into their homes. So we need desperately to get that corrected. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Shirley, I, I, again, I appreciate you coming down. I can assure you that that's a top priority with our public works, and, um, the engineers in the back, and so we're, we're working on it, I guarantee you.
Thank you, thank you.
And if, if there's not any results, you, you call my office again, but we, we just need a little time, but we're gonna get it taken care of.
Thank you for the attention.
Thank you, Shirley.
Larry Downs?
I did. I, it looked like Sheriff Simmons needed some assistance back there.
The sheriff was holding me up. How y'all doing today? I noticed that I, that you couldn't hear me real well on the last video because I pulled it, but it dropped. Anyways, uh, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, uh, uh, the COVID mask experience that's going on. It's the, it's a phenomenon, I, you know, it's kinda like a, it's almost like a cultism thing. So I just wanted to talk about it a bit. Uh, you know, and, and it's, 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 it's pretty odd. Yesterday I was watching the, uh, the inauguration, you know, and they all got the mask on, you know? Even, uh, you know, they come out with the show, and everybody has a mask on, and, you know, Garth Brooks comes out, makes the entrance with the mask on, looks good, cowboy hat and all, sings a beautiful song, "Amazing Grace." Soon as he gets down to where he's gonna sing, he takes his mask off, and he sings beautifully, beautiful ceremony. Then he goes and shakes the President's hand, Pence's hand, Kamala Harris's hand. He goes and hugs a couple other people, no mask on. Now, y'all know good and well that everybody at that event was tested. You know they were. I just like, I, I just want people to think about the show that's going on. If you don't have COVID, don't treat somebody like they're sick, you know? Say, hey, everybody was tested here. So, you know, tested twice, three times. I mean, I would say trillions of dollars that we've spent in testing and, you know, in government overreach, I would think that we could probably test these people three times with the best test known to man and say, hey, we're gonna have, you know, just like up here. I like to see y'all's faces, even Douglas's. I like his face. I wanna see the smiles. Bender, Commissioner Bender, great. You see the inconsistencies, y'all see it. The employees, our government employees, see it. You know whenever you're, y'all know, when you're back here in your offices with your people, you know you ain't got your mask on. We know these things. I have pictures. I've got pictures of nurses at the hospital without their mask on, hanging out with people. Let's just be real, that's all I'm saying. Let's, let's be real about it, you know? Same way with, with, with Lumen. He knows that he doesn't wear that mask all the time until I called him out that day right here. Then he started putting it on, that's just the way it is, and
Larry, and surgeons don't call me out, so don't worry about that.
It's, uh, it's even, he had his, uh, y'all know it. Anyways, uh, it's been reported that the SARS-two deaths have been labeled liberally, liberally labeled. The CDC even reports that six percent of those, those deaths didn't have two or more
Mr. Chairman, his time's up.
All right, keep that mask on, Lumen. Keep that, keep that up.
That was a great mask you had on Capitol Hill, Larry, good job, put your head on.
Boy, that's our last speaker, if, if we need a minute, if any bells need a minute before we go on. All right, um, all right, so we'll be moving in, we'll give, uh, Commissioner Underhill a quick second and also allow the clerk staff to transition. And what we're doing, Mr. Chairman, if I might, just a housekeeping thing, we're at ten o'clock. At eleven-thirty, I do have an, an online engagement, but, but I, I can come back after, you know, if necessary. But, uh, I'd just like to say, um, you know, if there's some items that, that we need all five of us to participate in, you know, at your